Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call a vote. All in favor say aye and I'm going to roll call. So Tiana says aye. Mark?
Mark says aye.
Andrea?
Andrea says aye.
Jackie?
Jackie says aye.
Barbara?
Barbara says aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Moving on, oops, I lost my agenda. There it is. We have reports. Art Incorporated, Vicki, are you here? There you are.
Yes, I am. This is my third Zoom meeting, so I have to figure out the buttons.
You're doing great.
Okay, um, things have certainly changed. COVID restrictions were lifted and now they are returning. No matter how it unfolds, we understand it will still be a while until people feel comfortable sitting inside next to strangers for a couple hours, especially in a theater or a closed room. We built our mobile stage on the fields for the concerts. It was funded by the Oregon Arts Commission and the Lane County Cultural Coalition. We've had one dramatic performance and several musical concerts. They brought people to the campus and we provided much appreciated live entertainment for them. They were all well received. This fall, we're going to once again try to have plays and acoustic music inside the theater when restrictions allow and when people feel comfortable and are ready to go back inside. They will continue through the winter and into next year. We've but begun rehearsals for our Reader's Theater troupe again in preparation for going into retirement facilities, community halls, etc. And when they feel comfortable having us entertain their residents. We'll also be doing Reader's Theater events in the theater and KOCF will air some mysteries and old radio shows from us as well. So that'll be fun and we will also try to do some regular plays like we normally do. We had planned to do a play based on stories written by Fernridge students about the history of the Fernridge Crow Lorraine area. But we had to change the focus of the grant that we got from the Oregon Arts Commission when students, parents and teachers were in no position to add another project to their schedule during the last year. We know you understand that. It was a challenging year for everyone. Instead, we're doing a series of mural panels that will be mounted on the outside of the theater building. We've tried, we've hired Jerry Ross, an internationally known artist who lives in Eugene to do the designing and outlining of the 14 panels, which will show different scenes and people from our local history. From Native American times up to the present. Community members from youth to adults with some instruction from Jerry are painting the actual panels in August. Every Tuesday and Saturday, all day we're painting. We have quite a few volunteers already, but if any of you wish to come and help paint, you are cordially invited. It's fun, quite frankly, even if you don't have talent like me. There'll be a booklet for those that come to the unveiling in October describing the people and the events that are on each panel. And you will all receive an invitation to come to that unveiling event. We hope it will be an educational experience now and in the future, maybe have kids from the elementary schools come and and look at the history of the area. We are continuing our fundraising activities and we have every expectation to meet the September 2022 deadline that you have extended to us. And thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome. Thank you for the report. Board members have any questions for Vicki while she's on?
No, I just want to say that it sounds like you have been doing a lot in these very difficult times and I'm impressed.
Good. Anybody else?
Thank you, Vicki.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to the Orchid Health Clinic update.
I don't see Orion on, so I'll go ahead and present. My name is Bob Colby Yankee. I'm the clinic manager for Orchid Health Fernridge. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about our services tonight. Wanted to start off by just talking about the type of services that we offer at Orchid Health. We do full primary care for any patient from birth throughout their entire life. We do services such as pediatric services, family medicine, chronic disease management for patients with diabetes and high blood pressure and other chronic diseases. We do sports medicine, sports physicals, well child checks, vaccinate vaccinations, immunizations. We're able to do all lab work on site and we're able to also do same day acute care visits. This fall, we will be launching a community health worker program. The program is designed to connect patients with necessary resources in the community that they may not have access to. And we also will be, we actually just hired a behavioral health specialist and we'll be starting mental health care here in the fall. We are very excited that we passed a milestone today. We welcomed our 100th patient today into the building. And as of June 28th, when we opened our doors, as of the end of business today, we've seen 105 patients so far. We do want to say that as being a school-based health clinic, that we are very convenient for students and parents because we're located on school grounds. So students can come over anytime for an appointment, which will help them miss less class time. In the end, that'll help them thrive both in the classroom and beyond. We do see all students regardless of any insurance status. They will not be asked to pay any out-of-pocket cost from Orkin. For those that are insured, we will bill their insurance company, but they will not be responsible for any co-pays or any costs that the insurance company does not cover. For any patient that does not have insurance, we will take care of them as well. For any of the students, they will not pay a single dime from Orchid if they do not have any insurance. For any families or any non-student patients, the hope is that we'll bring them to Orchid and they can establish with us. But if they have a PCP already, we are just wanting to let them know that we are another option for them for their acute care needs. Also, if a patient does come to us that does not have any insurance, that is either a family or non-student patient, we do offer an affordable sliding fee scale and we can also help the patient sign up for OHP and get them insurance. We're looking forward to partnering with the school guidance counselors and staff for things like speaking about healthcare jobs for career day, possibly doing some educational field trips, doing programs on hand hygiene. Maybe also working with committees and projects that are led by certain peer groups and forming a youth action counselor council with our clinic. If you all don't mind, I can take a moment to share a patient's story if we have time. Our first week of business, we got a phone call from a mother that wanted to establish care for herself and her daughter. In asking them to set up an appointment, the mother said that she would like to have an appointment actually on our first day and if her daughter can come in the following day. She said that she would like to do that because her daughter is autistic and is a little bit of a to handle. So she thought it would make more sense that if she can come in and fill out all the paperwork on the day one, then her daughter wouldn't have to spend as much time in the waiting room in the lobby. Her mother did inform us that the daughter had found their father dead in the house a few years back. When the EMTs and paramedics came to the house, ever since that moment, the daughter has always kind of assimilated going to the doctor or going to a clinic or seeing a doctor with death and it's always scared her to go to clinics. Being autistic, the mother also let us know that the daughter has a history of kicking and biting and hitting anyone when she goes to a clinic. She gave us some clues, some social cues to be aware of and some tips on what to do if her daughter did act out. The next day in morning huddle, we did talk about the patient and what the mother had said, what she had asked of us. When the daughter came in initially, she was very unengaged. She wasn't very vocal with our MA. Our MA had her do an eye chart and the young girl did not want to do it. She did not want to participate at all. When the MA went into the room and sat with the patient and was going over some questions with her, was not very talkative and not answering anything. The MA tried multiple different techniques, but the daughter did not want to open up. That was okay. We knew going in that it might be a struggle. So our provider went in and by the end of the provider's assessment, the little girl had opened up. She was telling us about her favorite color of flowers. She's telling us stories about her dog and lots of other things. It was really great to see that she was becoming comfortable in our presence. The mother thanked us for the way the appointment went. She went home and gave us a five-star Google review the next day, that day. So we were very, very excited about that. If any of you have ever been involved in a hiring process, when you put a team together, it's a little scary. You know, you don't know how they're going to work out. I just want to say that I was so thankful for this moment and very proud of my team for what they did and helping that little girl's care. So thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Excellent resource for the community. Any board members have any questions for Bob?
Nope. Just once again, I want to say thank you for choosing our community to set up, set up shop.
All right, moving forward to the English Language Learner State Report. Gary, you're muted. There you go.
Okay. ELL report is me. Before that, though, just kind of tag on and thank Bob and his team. They've been great partners so far and we got lots of plans to. There's various ways they're going to help our district and students and staff in the months to come. So thanks again. As far as the ELL report, this is just a simple item on our agenda. We're required each year to share with the board that the state has produced this report and we have linked it to our website replacing the previous one. I don't know if Michelle, you wanted to show where that was. If you go to our website, for anyone that's here, kind of all of our state reports, district reports are on the left-hand side in that, at that link that says district or state reports. This one's happens to be more towards the bottom. There it is. So it's in English and Spanish. Again, it's not really data specific to our district. It's the statewide services ELL report that ODE puts out. It's a long document. And our requirement here is to have it on our website and notify the board that it's there. So that's it for that.
All right, I think you're up next also with the superintendent's report.
Yep, I'll be quick. First thing I wanted to mention is some good news. We, as you recall, last year we had we had a very large donation to our district, almost three quarters of a million dollars. The LD in Vellnum Montgomery Scholarship was established. We're now giving a recurring $5,000 multiple scholarships to EHS students that apply and qualify. They issued their first two here a few months ago. I think some of you were a part of that committee that ordered those. Since that time, we've had two additional donations. One, we're currently working on it, will be in place. It will be in place by scholarship season at the end of this year. And it's in the, going to be in the amount of $100,000 that will allow us to have recurring $1,000 scholarships. The specifics of it are around science, students that want to pursue students that want to pursue something in a science field. And that donation comes from Gary and Sue Christian and they've named it in honor of an old Elmira High School science teacher, Harold Plateau. Probably 10 or 12 years ago, he donated $10,000 to the district to get this started and we started giving him an annual award and I think that the interest on that, you know, on that $10,000 was like $100. The student got a $100 check. Well, now he's decided to give us $50,000 this year and another $50,000 next year. We'll have $100,000. That's pretty remarkable. These folks are giving back to the community in this way. And the second one I wanted to let you know about is Valley United Methodist Church, who is closing and the Fernridge Faith Center is taking their place. Mr. Michael Foster contacted me and they were closing out some of their accounts and they donated $4,000 to the district. We're going to use that money in their letter that I'm reading here. It says, please accept this $4,000 gift. Our hope is that it helps to continue your efforts to nourish the hearts, bodies and minds of our children. It's our wish to use these funds, as you mentioned in our discussion, which is to offset the cost of feeding our children and helping young families navigate troubled times. So we'll use it to to help with overdue lunch fees. And then our new family resource coordinator, Lucina, we've put this money into an account that she will have access to to help families that you know, have some kind of crisis throughout the year. Their power is cut off. There's a fire. There's a death. They can use some assistance. So this will be kind of a starter for that account. So that's the first thing I wanted to go over. Second thing at our last board meeting, I mentioned the EHS Device Protection Plan and just know we continue to work on that and like we talked about. Of course, it's voluntary, $20 for their take-home device, which allows for it to be fully covered. And for anyone that can't afford it, we'll we'll have a way that it's free. So there'll be nothing to worry about there. Our board operating agreement, we will, I'll get that up on the website. We didn't make any changes. I just wanted to note, probably have it down at the district office for folks to sign in the coming weeks. Board goals, we discussed those at our retreat. I think, I believe I sent you the three goals. One on community, one on support services and one on equity. There they are. My resident wordsmith, Ms. Larson, do you have any critiques there or anything you'd like to change or obviously any, any of you, if you have any content that you'd like to discuss, but met with our team here and that's what we came up with. Number two goal didn't really change. We combined the old one and three into number one. So if there's no feedback on that, we'll get started on putting that into our table and start creating all the strategies that will help us. You know, be a little micro goals we'll accomplish throughout the year to make movement towards these overarching goals of our district. Okay.
So I just, so the number three goal looks at multiple data sources to identify our strengths and areas of needed growth.
Okay, yeah, or areas for growth.
Areas for growth. I wasn't sure if you intended that to be for areas that you need to grow in or
We actually debated this a little bit on that word right there. So all I mean, putting the word, obviously what we want there is to identify our areas where we need growth. So I'm certainly fine with inserting that needed word in there.
Or just areas for growth is fine. I'm not, you know, I just wasn't sure about whether it was areas that we've had growth in or if it was areas for growth.
It's areas for growth. Okay, if there's nothing else, go on. Just wanted to quickly mention because it's all this time of year, there's so much to go through on our website and I've started that process. But probably give me till the first of September to get everything on our website updated. So a lot of work's been done, but I, Ms. Cook and I went through everything last week. I have some tasks to do. She has some. I would expect certainly by the start of school, but probably sooner. I'll email folks and say, hey, okay, I think every link is updated. Everything's changed that needs to be changed. Everything's current on our current website and that'll be the cue for you guys to go search around and find out what I missed anywhere. So stand by for that in a couple of weeks. I wanted to mention, finally, we are continuing with the bond refinancing with Piper Jaffrey. So we have a meeting scheduled here in a few weeks, but again, just know that we're continuing down the road of refinancing our bonds. At last check, I believe it was, was going to be around a $1.2 million overall savings to our taxpayers. However, we're still like 45 days out. Market can change a lot, but we're tracking it. If it stays in our favor as we continue to approach, we'll be proceeding. If it doesn't, we won't and we'll change course. Let's see, the last thing I just wanted to mention, you know, I know some of our comments here at the beginning on masks, just a reminder of where we're at. You know, I think folks at this point understand this isn't something that's in our control. We encourage folks to continue to reach out to the governor, ODE, share their concerns. There's a, there's a call tomorrow night. I think it's on Facebook Live. The OD's holding to hear feedback from folks. Every Lane County superintendent that I know of, there's 17 of us continues to advocate for local control because we know things can look very different in Benita versus Ontario versus Roseburg versus Beaverton. And once that happens, we'll make our decisions here in conjunction with Lane County Public Health, kind of like we were prepared to do three or four weeks ago before that changed. But at this time, doing anything different is certainly not in the realm of anything I'm considering, simply based on all the ramifications it would have for not only in the area of us getting fined, but the licensures and the income of every employee in our district. It's not something we're going to put in jeopardy. Okay, and I think that is all that I have that I wanted to touch bases on tonight.
Any board questions or comments? Nope. All right, moving forward to discussion items, West Lane Charter Schools Annual Review.
Yep, this is me. I completed this a while ago. I sent it to you. It was very short this year, probably shorter than normal. But in totality here with you, just know that that process went well. I had an end of year meeting with Ms. Stoller at West Lane Tech. I'll read a paragraph from, from the summary. West Lane Tech is a program that students a path to a diploma that's different than the regular public school system. This year concluded year two of the current five-year contract with West Lane Tech. Graduating students and academic success for a larger percentage of the students continues to be the biggest metric that will be used to assess the success of West Lane Tech. So they know that's what they really need to focus on. They're doing so. Last year was a, you know, just like us, was a unique year for them. But as far as I'm concerned, Ms. Stoller's been great to work with. They're providing a service that's a need out here and we're continuing to try to support them and in meeting their goals.
Okay, thank you. We have to declare Budget Committee vacancies and that requires board action.
Okay, looking on my screens. We have two vacancies or two positions to declare vacant. It's position number three. That was held by Tori Macklin and that term expired in June of 2021. And then number five was vacant. It was not filled. So we just need to, to have board action for positions number three and number five.
I make a motion to declare positions number three and number five vacant and open, I guess.
This is Parker and I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Barbara. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Michelle, would you reach out to Tori and ask her if she'd be willing to?
Yeah.
Continue.
Him.
Oh, him. I'm sorry.
Yes, I will reach out to Mr. Macklin and see if he's interested.
All right, sorry.
Excellent. Thank you, Michelle. So we have a motion and a second. Need to call the vote. All in favor say aye and I'll call. Tiana says aye. Mark?
Mark says aye.
Andrea?
Andrea says aye.
Jackie?
Jackie says aye.
Barbara?
Barbara's.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Barbara says aye, sorry.
So the motion passes five to zero. If anybody who's on here is interested in serving on the Budget Committee, I hear it is a ton of fun.
Yes, it is.
It is so much fun. And it's, it's, it's good to know what's going on. It's a great way to, to understand some of the ins and outs of, of how the school district works.
I have a question.
Yes.
When, when did nominations close for the Budget Committee?
Michelle?
I want to correct me if I get this wrong. It's, it's ongoing. There isn't necessarily a closure date.
Okay.
Prior to that, those meetings starting is what we prefer, but that's why they're declared so early so that there's time to advertise and recruit for someone who's interested in, in filling those positions.
And when do those meetings? Open till filled. When do those meetings start? Was, is it March? May?
May.
May, okay.
So we've got, we've got some time. All right, moving forward then to the options program. We have some course approval that will require board action. Can we do those as one lump or do we have to do them?
It can just be one, it can just be one lump.
Okay, and we've already all seen them.
Yeah, so I had sent out this list a month or so ago. All I asked Michelle to bring up was Form 400. These links share the scope and sequence of the middle school and high school courses and the course description for elementary. They're, you know, they're nothing new. These courses we used last year, you had approved some in November. We didn't do, do, need to do everything under the governor's emergency declaration. But now as a part of Division 22, we need to make sure everything that we are issuing credit for there at high school level and offering at the elementary and middle school level that the board has approved. So I would simply, first of all, if you have any questions, feel free to fire them at me. If I don't know them, Forrest, I asked Forrest to come on tonight, but it was his anniversary. So I said, you don't need to come on to answer any questions. If they have any, I'll tell them. I'll get back to them. But at the top of this Form 400, I would just, again, after you have any, ask any questions that you might have that the board accepts the independent adoption of core curriculum for our virtual education programs as submitted. So essentially what that top line reads.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Gary or potentially Forrest?
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Okay, hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the curriculum proposal for independent adoption of core curriculum for virtual education programs.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call to vote. Tiana says aye. Mark?
Mark says aye.
Andrea?
Andrea says aye.
Jackie?
Jackie says aye.
Barbara?
Barbara says aye.
Motion passes five to zero. I have lost control of my screen here. One second. Here it is. Nope, that's not helpful at all. Okay, there's the agenda, but I can't see it because I'm almost 50 now. School board meeting, oh, the meeting adjustment for March. That's correct. I remember that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. So that is, we had two meetings scheduled in March and one of them was during spring break and we are deleting the one during spring break. Is that correct? And moving the things that were going to happen then to the one on the 14th.
Yep, that is correct. So essentially combining those two meetings into one. There's two meetings because of the deadline in state law for getting teacher contracts approved. So sometimes that, there's two meetings in March, but this way we'll just combine them into one. But this way we'll just combine them into one and eliminate that spring break Monday meeting.
Okay. Excellent. And does that require, that does require board action. I'm sorry. Barbara, did you have a question?
No.
No. Did somebody else? All right, so if there's no questions, we need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the school board meeting adjustment for March twenty twenty-one, or it should be twenty-two, right? Not twenty-one.
Yes.
Okay, so motion is made and for us to have one session in March on the fourteenth. March twenty-two.
I will second that.
No, Andrew, be me.
So I hear a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call to vote. All in favor, Tiana says aye. Mark?
Mark says aye.
Jackie?
Jackie says aye.
Andrea?
Andrea says aye.
Barb?
Barbara says aye.
Motion passes five to zero. And we are now on to, moving on to personnel. We have several it looks like only new hires at this point of licensed employees. And that does not require board action. Is that correct?
I'll make a motion to accept the new hires as as written in the agenda.
I will second that.
With a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Tiana says aye. Mark?
Mark says aye.
Jackie?
Jackie says aye.
Andrea?
Andrea says aye.
Barb?
Barbie says aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We also have some changes in non-licensed personnel. I was going to say you can unzoom if you need to. I had somehow shrunk my whole Zoom screen down to fifty percent at the same time as I was trying to make it bigger. Yeah, I hit a wrong button. Okay, so we have two resignations and a couple new hires or no new hires.
Three resignations and one hiring of a assistant football coach.
Okay. Excellent. And that does not require board action. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, any late items or closing comments? Okay, hearing none, I, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.